The board will now reconvene in open session. The time is six oh seven. We thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to join us tonight. At this time, we would respectfully ask you to turn off the sound of your cell phones. May I remind anyone wishing to address the board that they must have a completed public comment card before the start of the public portion of tonight's meeting, indicating the agenda item of which they need, would like to speak. As your Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals for the district, listen to reports presented to the superintendent and his designees, approve and review the budget, approve certain personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. It's the board's responsibility to govern the affairs of the district and to ensure that the district is moving forward in meeting the vision and the goals that are set. Meeting times for board meetings are posted on the AISD website at abileneisd.org. The public is invited to attend. This time, I would like to ask Mrs. Allison Sims, Associate Superintendent for the Development of Human Resources, and to lead us in the invocation and pledges.
Pray with me, please. Gracious and loving God, as we gather on the eve of a new school year, we pause to give you thanks for the gift of learning, for the opportunity to serve, and for the young lives entrusted to our care. We pray for the students who will fill our classrooms and hallways in the days ahead. Bless them with curiosity, wonder, and a deepening sense of their worth and potential. Grant them safety, belonging, and joy as they grow in knowledge and in community. We lift up the teachers, administrators, and staff who labor daily in love and dedication. Strengthen them for the work ahead. Give them wisdom, patience, and compassion. Let them be instruments of encouragement and light in the lives of their students. Bless the parents and families that they may partner in faith and understanding, supporting the work of education with grace and hope. Grant us clarity of mind, unity of purpose, and humility of heart. May our hearts reflect justice and mercy. May we always act in the best interest of those we serve. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We'll now move to item C, Board Superintendent Announcements. Dr. Keen.
I have a couple of announcements for you guys tonight. First of all, tomorrow is a big day, the first day of school, as you know. On the fourteenth, we have our annual Budget and Tax Rate Board Meeting, where we set the, set the tax rate for this year. And then I have a, just a couple of professional brags I want to tell you guys about. And one of those is recently, there's an organization called Texas Schools Alliance that is an association of the largest schools in the state of Texas. And I'm happy to report that Abilene ISD was named one of the members of its Board of Directors. They have a nine, nine-board member, board, and Abilene ISD is a part of that as of just a couple of weeks ago. Also, I was recently named to the Advocacy Committee for the Texas Association of School Administrators. And this past Friday, myself and the Midland ISD Superintendent participated in a panel with several hundred TEA employees to talk about innovation out in the field. So just some, some good things happening in Abilene ISD that I wanted you guys to know about.
Great, thank you. That's very exciting. Abilene is leading the way across the state. Does anyone else have any more announcements? Let's move on to item four, recognitions. Item A, ISD Teachers of the Year. I believe that's Ms. Patty Blue, Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, are going to introduce those people to us.
Yes, I get to do very fun things. So, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Keen, and the trustees. In late April of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Abilene ISD Elementary and Secondary Teachers of the Year were first honored by the Abilene Education Foundation at the Teachers in the Lamp Light Celebration. We're proud to get to bring these teachers to you tonight for well-deserved recognition and to help us kick off another school year. So first, we'd like to introduce Jennifer Crisp. She is the twenty-four, twenty-five Elementary Teacher of the Year. Whether it's encouraging a student to think bigger, actually, where is Jennifer? Come on. Whether it's encouraging a student to think bigger, guiding their group through a creative project, or helping someone discover confidence in their own ideas, Jennifer Crisp brings energy, curiosity, and intentionality to every corner of the classroom. Crisp joined Taylor Elementary in 2023, bringing years of experience as a gifted and talented teacher across multiple AISD campuses. In her current role, she creates opportunities for enrichment and acceleration, designing hands-on projects that challenge students to think critically and creatively using the school's makerspace. Last year, her students explored topics like nuclear energy, deep space, building everything from educational board games to original rap songs to demonstrate their learning. Taylor Principal Leslie Roberts, who nominated Crisp for the award, said Crisp's influence reaches the entire campus. Mrs. Roberts said Jennifer has helped students become more excited about learning, pushing them beyond their current boundaries, and she continues to innovate and improve the services offered at Taylor so that all students can achieve academic success. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Crisp. They want pictures. I was trying, are we going to go ahead and do individuals or together? Individual? Okay. So if you will join the board.
Congratulations. Everyone squeeze together a little. There you go. All right, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
And then our Secondary Teacher of the Year is Krista Connor. Krista? Can't see her.
No wonder no one could see her.
When Ms. Connor's sixth-grade social studies students walk into her classroom, they know exactly what time it is. It's go time. Ms. Connor's classroom motto sets the tone for a fast-paced, high-energy learning environment where expectations are clear, routines are purposeful, and every moment counts. It's how Connor approaches teaching and how she helps students discover a love for learning. Each day begins with good things, a time for students to share personal highlights as part of the Capturing Kids' Heart Model. Connor listens closely and follows up with students individually to begin building beautiful connections. Former Craig Principal Deb Stewart nominated Connor for this honor, saying the following. Ms. Connor is a driving force in the Craig Middle School community. She collaborates seamlessly with colleagues and actively contributes to campus improvement initiatives. She leads the Student Council in meaningful service projects, teaching students the value of giving back and fostering a sense of community. She also takes time outside school hours to attend athletic and fine art events, cheering students on as they strive for greatness. Her dedication to her students extends beyond high academic expectations. She is their biggest supporter, always encouraging them to pursue their dreams. Even students who face challenges find patience and encouragement in her classroom as she cultivates a space where learners can thrive. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Connor. Okay, it's picture time.
All right, everyone looking right here. Ready? One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
Next, Abilene ISD Employee Awards with Dr. Jordan Zeimer, Executive Director of Communications.
All right, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Keen, and members of the board. So this evening, I have the privilege of introducing our May 2025 Employee Awards recipient. So these recipients were celebrated on their campuses or at their workplaces with a visit from our Price Patrol back on May nineteenth. That was after your May meeting. So instead of inviting them to your June meeting, we decided to give them another gift, which was a summer without attending a meeting in the evening. I felt like they would appreciate that, but we're happy to bring them back for you to recognize tonight. So our Employee Awards Program celebrates AISD educators and staff who exemplify our strategic priorities. You can see those listed on your screen here. And when we launched the program, our goal was to create more opportunities to honor the work of our staff who are out on campuses and departments, who are doing the work across our district to try to live out these strategic priorities every day. Each of the recipients you'll meet tonight were nominated by their peers and then selected by district leaders. And the Price Patrol I mentioned is really, really important. We are joined on that patrol by our friends at First Financial Bank. They are our generous program sponsor for this, and they present each award recipient with a gift card, which I always want to say thank you to our community partners who join alongside us in celebrating the work of our, of our teachers and staff. So thank you to our friends over at First Financial Bank for always being faithful to us. Okay, so without further ado, I want to bring each of these, I know they're out there. I'm going to bring each of our recipients up with me. So when I say your name, just come join me up here, and then we'll clap for you, and then we'll have a group photo at the end. Is that cool? Sounds, sounds crystal clear? Okay, so very first, we have Mr. Earl Martinez with our District Warehouse team. Join me in congratulating him. Now, I have to say, my favorite congratulations, sir. Thank you for coming back tonight. I have to say, my favorite thing about this award is his entire team insisted on being in the picture. They, they were not going to let that team be taken without the whole team present, and I know you love that too. So congratulations. We're so, we're so proud of Mr. Martinez and all his work for AISD. Next, Ms. Mary Vermillion, our man middle school nurse. I know she's here. And this was also a special one because the person who nominated her mentioned how Ms. Vermillion makes a difference across the whole campus and with our entire district student, student health team. And so congratulations again. Thanks for being here tonight. We're so proud of you. Next, Ms. The Legend herself, Ms. Jody Reese from Taylor Elementary School. Come on up here. And Jody doesn't like that title, but everybody that I ever talked to about Jody says how much they love Jody, and I think that's legend status. So congratulations. Thank you for all your work for us and for helping our kids even now. And then Ms. Tiffany Wright, our new teacher at Bonham Elementary. We're so excited you're here. And again, if you want to have a fun photo, ask her class to take a picture, because getting them, getting them all to look forward was the challenge. But we did it. We have evidence they're looking forward. But just, I want to say, congratulations to each of you. Thank you so much. These, these strategic priorities, you guys live out in your jobs every day. We're so proud of you for doing that. Thank you for taking care of Abilene ISD with your work. We love you. We celebrate you. And congratulations again. Thanks for being here. Let's give them a round of applause. If y'all would just line up and come aboard as a group.
Thank you. Congratulations. And you're back. We're so happy you're back.
Hey there. Can I have you all scooch over just this way a little bit towards? Yeah, perfect, perfect. Trying to get you centered. And then we'll have Ms. Earl's peek through in the back. There we go. All right. One, two, three. Just a couple more for good measure. Thank you.
Congratulations, you guys. Again, everybody. Thank you very much. And we will be back soon with more Employee Awards winners this year. So thanks again, everybody.
Yes.
Thank you, Communications.
We'll now move on to item four, item four, oral communication from the public. The board encourages comments from the district from members of the public. Anyone wishing to address the board must have completed a public comment card before the start of the public portion of tonight's meeting, letting us know the agenda item or topic about which you wish to speak. Oral communication from the public is governed by AISD policy BED local. Under the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board is not permitted to discuss or act upon any issues that aren't posted on our agenda. A speaker will be given up to five minutes to address the board. If, however, the total number of speakers exceeds, speaking to address the board at a meeting exceeds five, the per-speaker time limit may be reduced. In no event will a speaker be given less than one minute to address the board. Tonight, we have three speakers, so we will not be adjusting the time. Dr. Keen, we'll have a monitoring system in place, and I'll give him a minute to explain that.
Okay, it's pretty simple. There's a monitor there on the podium, and it will show a five-minute timer. It will start out at green, and when you get down to sixty seconds remaining, the color will change to yellow. And when you get down to thirty seconds remaining, the color will change to red, and then it will let you know when you are out of time.
First, we'd please have Tammy Fogel.
That was a very nice introduction. I wasn't expecting to be here tonight, so I'm really tickled that I at least get to address y'all. My plans got canceled, so I wasn't lying, I promise. You know, I show up when I can, and I'm really, had a lot of time to process. The workshops are, I just have to recommend that the public should participate, because you learn so much of what's going on, and I think it, there's just not enough time to describe what's going on here in the public, so I'm thankful for that. And I do enjoy it. I never feel like it's a waste of my time, even if it's two hours for just me, because I know y'all still do way more than even just the public gets to do. So when I came here, it was just, you know, I've been tracking things in the law, I've been learning how to do that a lot better. And so I wanted to address this EB or EFB policy. I have had this bag in my closet for two years, and it's, it's a porn bag. And I carried it around in the community, because we found out there was some really bad stuff in our library that was exposing kids to harmful stuff. And people didn't believe me, and they thought I was crazy. So when I pull out the books and showed them, they were like, oh my gosh, that is bad. Even people who I would not necessarily agree with would agree that these bags, that these books are not appropriate for kids. So I pulled this out to show you that this is not a new topic for me, and I have been advocate, I've been patiently advocating for making sure our kids are safe, not only here in the schools, but in the city. And since then, it has been made clear that we are waiting for the schools to make it right. We know what some of these sexual or parent nature books do to kids, and it's not appropriate age-wise in, in this stage of life. And so we've been waiting for the schools to make it right, and we found early on that there was no way for us as the community to help you guys pull out bad books. And so we stopped. We stopped arguing with these books, trying to bring them together, because they're vile, and they really cause problems in your own psyche. Even though I'm a God-fearing woman who has a really pretty stable ability to handle life, this would put me in a depression reading some of these books that are geared towards our young adults, which are, it's ages twelve to seventeen. So I had a list of books that I noticed were in the libraries and the public schools, and I just didn't have a plan for it. So I just took a few minutes, and I'll hand you a copy of what I'm about to share with you. What I noticed on Thursday was that we talked about what Tazby said about this HB thirteen and this new local policy. But one thing I found is we didn't actually read or include the actual bill. And there's some other things that I think are important for every one of us in the community to read this bill, SB thirteen, because it's mainly targeted towards parent materials. Those are materials that are obscene and do not belong in the children's literature. And I think if you haven't read the bill, you should as a school board member, and it's very enlightening. We want the librarians, I heard we want the librarians to be at the forefront. The problem is, you know, the books that I have on this list right here, and I'll give you a copy of this, were in the libraries in 2023. And if you see the yellow copy, those are the ones currently, as of today, still available in Abilene High School and Cooper High School. So the problem is not being taken care of, and the schools are not making it a priority to address this. So I feel like this is where this comes in. And having this school librarian advisory council is important that y'all pass tonight. It should be, it should be taken out. This is supposed to be a follow-up to HB nine hundred, and again, it's to protect kids from obscene books. We're not talking about general books or cultural books. We're talking about books that have to do with the parent nature, and I'm trying to keep this age-appropriate. I then looked up another topic that is not, that is parent in nature, and these are the books I found in the library just one quick search today. Okay? Kids have access to these books, and I'm going to give you a copy of this. Then the last thing is, is the librarians are kind of the forefront of this. And it's troubling to me, because even though we're not a part of the American Library Association, we're part of, a lot of the librarians are part of the Texas Library Association. And I found an article that's titled Texas Library Association to Teach Librarians How to Protect Obscene Books. So they're not in our corner right now, unfortunately. And then I also found an article from that same organization that teaches parent, that tells parent, librarians that they're, you know, they're, they're having to go out of their way, and they're having to suffer because they have to protect kids, and they just want to do their jobs. And they want to protect, they don't want to ban books. And this is not about banning books. It's not taking, it's taking books that don't belong in the schools, and they're available in any other source. In fact, most of them are not available in the children's section in the public library. They're available in the adult section, because that's where they belong. So I just want to clarify that parents want transparency, and they want to know what's going on. And I did a quick, maybe thirty minutes, and I found enough stuff that it should be troubling to you, and it should keep you awake at night, knowing that our kids have access to this, and it's been put in there by staff and teachers. And, and again, it's parent in nature, and we need to take care of this. So please get the School Library Advisory Council approved and started, and let's get our libraries cleaned up and, and our classrooms for our kids, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogel.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can get this.
You're fine.
Yeah, there should be enough for everyone. And again, if you have any questions, I'll be here afterwards to answer or email me or whatever, whatever, how we do that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Next is Cynthia Alvedres.
Thank you. Good evening. I was hoping my son would go first, because he signed up first, but it's okay. And I was going to kind of piggyback off of some things that he stated.
Actually, if you would like to switch that.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Come on, mother.
Absolutely.
Awesome, sorry.
We will listen to Jayden Alvedres now. Thank you, Jayden.
Thank you for coming to listen to our recommendations and our concerns. I would like to tell you something that happened at an elementary school, and so, I was playing on the playground, and then I got choked, and then I got detention. And what I don't think is fair is that I got detention, and I was the one that got choked. And the teachers said that they didn't see it, but I know they saw it, because I saw them looking at me. And so we had a meeting after that, because the teachers did not call my mom. And so I also wanted something maybe y'all could do. I, I want a policy that maybe if you get hit, that you can hit them back. So thank you for coming to listen to our recommendations and our concerns. God bless. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jayden.
Thank you, sir.
Now Cynthia Alvedres will follow up.
Awesome, thank you. So I did want to tell you a little bit, a little bit about that story. The major issue with it was I requested the playground footage to be able to be, to be able to look at what actually happened to my son. And unfortunately, the opinion of the Attorney General was sought, and it was blocked. So it's extremely unfair to him, because he was punished for being assaulted. And that kind of leads me into something else. We, we've actually taken care of it. The district was kind enough to be able to allow us to move him from that particular elementary school, which was Martinez Elementary. So we do appreciate the accommodations that were made for him based on the fact that he was a victim. Again, my, the biggest concern that I had was that I did request the playground footage just to kind of verify what it is that he was telling me based on, or what it was that he was telling me, and also what the teacher was saying. The issue was he told me the same story five times. The teacher in the meeting told me five different stories, hence as to why I wanted to see the footage. And that kind of leads me in to what it is that I want to talk about. There is a cell phone policy that was passed. There's a law that's fixing to go into play beginning of September. If you don't already know, the kids already know how to get out of those little bags that you guys spent a lot of money on, where there's a will, there's a way, right? If they'll get confiscated, we'll have to pay to get it out. My biggest concern is the focus on the cell phones, not necessarily just the pornographic books, but what are you going to do when you don't have any students in there to take cell phones away from or to, you know, to, to worry about the books that they're reading? My major concern with what we have going on here in Abilene ISD is the possibility of weapons gaining access to our campuses. We have the right kind of fences. We finally have the signs that I requested that you guys put up five or six years ago. But what are we doing to prevent the weapons getting into and onto the campus? Because by that time, it's too late. The fences aren't going to work. We're not going to be able to get the video cams, because y'all are going to block it. Not necessarily y'all, maybe your legal team. We're going to have to reach out to Governor Greg Abbott or whoever it is to try to get access to that video, those videos. So we are leading the way with cell phone, with the confiscations of cell phones, but we're not leading the way when you're talking about, just in my opinion, keeping our students safe when you're talking about a school shooting. I can tell you right now, students are scared that that's a possibility, that that's going to happen, and they don't have access to those cell phones to contact their parents. Another thing that I don't think anyone is thinking about is the intel that you have when you have students who have cell phones. They can tell you where the shooter's at, what room they're in, whether they're walking down the hallway, and, you know, if your school marshal gets shot, what are you going to do? You're not going to have that intel. You're not going to have those students that are going to be able to tell you, hey, he's here, mom, da-da-da, whatever, you know? That's something that I, that, you know, kind of plays throughout my mind when you're talking about the confiscation of cell phones. And I believe you and me, they get on my nerves, because I have teenagers that have cell phones, and they get on my nerves too. But this is something, you know, that's kind of plaguing my mind. So just some statistics that I looked up. There have been over a hundred and thirty-five school shootings just in Texas alone since nineteen seventy. It's important to note that this number includes all types of shooting events, not just those with fatalities. Our state ranks second in the U.S. for the number of such incidents. And there is not one law that requires any district within our state to have metal detectors. But we have a law that's fixing to be passed in September to confiscate cell phones. You're not going to have cell phones to confiscate if you have dead students. You're not going to have books to worry about if you got blood all over them, because you got dead students in libraries, you know? And that is a, that is a reality that we, that we, you know, that goes through my mind as a parent. It goes through the students' minds, because they see it all the time. And metal detectors are not universally required in Texas at schools, in Texas schools. Another thing that needs to be known, and you probably already know that, is that Abilene ISD actually, I believe, failed or didn't get a really good grade when you're talking about intruder detection audit that occurred in twenty twenty-three. Y'all can't tell us what it is that you failed at doing, because that's a security breach. So I, as a parent, don't know, is it because they came and they tested your campus? What campus was it that they tested that they were able to gain access to? Was it the fence? Was it because you didn't have a sign? Was it because of a side door? I don't know where that side door is at. Is it, is it a school that my child goes to? As a parent, that's, those are the things that go through my mind, and it, it. And it, it bothers me that, do I feel like the, uh, hold on a second, Jatyn, can you stop clicking that pen? I'm ready for school to start. Um, but it bothers me as a parent, it bothers me as a parent. Do I believe the confiscation of cell phones is important? Maybe. Do I feel like the require, like metal detectors being requirements at, at our districts, at least in the high schools? I, I feel like that's more important than cellphone confiscations.
Thank you, your time is up.
Oh, darn, okay. Um, can I just say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there is one city in the state of Texas, or one school district, and it's Southside ISD in San Antonio. Uh, that this district is reportedly the only one in the city, and I, I, I think probably in the state of Texas, with metal detectors at every campus. They spent eighty thousand dollars on thirty-five walk-through detectors and have been using them since the end of the last academic year. I would just like to request that maybe we think about that, uh, maybe do like an implementation at one high school just to kind of, you know, see if that's something that would be required. Just because like I said, if you don't have any students, there's no cell phones to confiscate, and there's no books to worry about. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Fantastic, we appreciate community input. We will now move on to item six, consent agenda. The AISD Board of Trustees meetings are preceded by in-depth board workshops which are held prior to regular meetings. The purpose of the workshop meeting of the board is to discuss items in preparation for potential sc- uh, consideration at future board meetings. Meeting times are posted on the AISD website at abblingisd.org, the public is always invited to attend. Does a board member need to remove an item of discussion from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion regarding the items on our consent agenda tonight?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Tedmore. Do we have a second? Danny Wheat. Dr. Wheat. All right, we will now have a roll call vote. Bill Enriquez?
Yes.
Taylor Tedmore?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Angie Wiley? Yes. The motion passes seven to zero. Now we're going to move on to item seven, reports. Item A is our first report, academic report with Ms. Patty Blue returning to our podium.
Good evening again. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about preliminary celebrations. Um, so the first question, why am I saying they're preliminary? That's because TEA has not actually released the official, the official ratings yet. Um, if you'll remember, two thousand twenty-four has still been the midst of the lawsuit, that's all settled. So TEA has made the decision to officially release twenty-four at the same time they released twenty-five. Um, the thirteenth, so two days from now, they will put that information into a system they call TIL that we get to go in and look at it. And then on the fifteenth is when it's publicly released on TEA's website and the news media and all those sorts of things. So we have some information we want to share. We're not going to go into huge detail because it's not official yet. But as soon as things become official, we've got some pretty big celebrations to have around Abbling ISD. So, where do these predictions come from? Um, Abbling ISD and Region fourteen Education Service Center, there's two different softwares out there that do this. We have one, they have the other. And so, um, both, we've run both of those systems and looked at the predictions. Predictions are usually pretty accurate, but we're going to see in just a second, even if you're off just one or two points, it can make a difference in the final rating. So that's one of the reasons that we're cautious about putting some things out public until we, we get it officially from the state. Um, we have shared these prediction with campus administrators, they have the data, they know what we predict that their rating will be. And I think some of them have shared that a little bit with their staff because again, there's a lot to celebrate. So, many reasons, many, many, many reasons of why we want to go ahead and show this to you now. Here's a few highlights. First of all, seven of our campuses we predict are going to increase their rating by at least one later, letter grade. Eleven will increase the number used to assign. Now what that means is like, they might have had a sixty-two last year, and they have a sixty-seven this year. So it's not going to bump up the letter grade, but that's a big gain. And so we had eleven of our campuses, it's not going to show when you look at the letter. But when you look at the number, you're going to see there was a pretty big increase, a lot of hard work happened. We will have one campus that is an A predicted, I'm going to emphasize that again, predicted. Um, yes, last year we had two. Four that will be a B, last year we had one, again, predicted. And what I'm about to show you, that could change this a lot. Five of our campuses have a seventy-eight or a seventy-nine. So if our software, all of the, the pieces we have to, to navigate are off just a little bit, they can bump to a B very easily. And we will not be surprised if we don't get several of those bumped to a B. There are sixty star-tested areas, if you look at the grade levels, the content, the meets, masters, approaches, thirty-eight out of the sixty, we had an increase. We had improvement in our scores. Seven areas of star, we beat the state. That's up, we had three last year. So we've increased the areas that we beat the state. Thirty-seven of those sixty-star areas, we closed the gap between us and the state. So that we had the seven, we actually beat them, and then we have thirty-seven other areas that we actually shrunk the gap between us and the state. Three of our four high schools actually increased their CCMR, their college credit, college career military readiness. And the one that didn't held tied at a ninety. So, and I will remind you on CCMR, that's the one, one of the ones that runs a year behind. So we really anticipate that we're going to see even bigger gains this time next year because we have very consciously worked and monitored to get those numbers up. So, I'm going to remind you too, because here's a, a bigger celebration. Remember our North Star goal is by the end of twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year, seventy-five percent of the students in AISD will be in ARB seats. This is the path we've set out. So we started twenty-four, twenty-five at six percent, our goal was to be at twenty percent by the end of that year. Guys, we're at twenty-eight if our predictions hold true. And I did not figure in those five campuses that might make a B. So it could be considerably higher than this when we finish and get final ratings. So, as soon as we have official data, we'll share it.
That is great information, and, and I want to say that my feeling hasn't changed much on on the star test and how it's done and how it rules our world. But the indication of these students scoring better has to indicate that something right is happening. We're not making magic tricks, we're not pulling any rabbits out of the hat, except for, um, encouraging teachers to teach kids. At, to give kids an education. So, um, for that to seem like we're just going after the scores, I do not believe that because our, our goal is to have every kid, as many as we can get in an A or B campus, which that's the only way we can measure them. And so why wouldn't we want our kids in A and B campuses? Because apparently they're doing something well. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just say also, I mean, congratulations, it's a lot of hard work from a lot of people to get us to this point. I mean, to get the same results means you get, you're doing what you've always done. So when we're getting new results, that means we're doing things differently, and that, it's not easy to do things differently, it's not easy to turn the ship. And so it's really exciting to see positive momentum in this direction. This is really what we're here for, is student outcomes. And so to see that this district is moving in the right direction and has good momentum is exciting, and the community should be really excited about that and proud of it as well.
We have a district full of employees that want the absolute best for every child in our district. And they're willing to take on some of these challenges, they're willing to do some of these, you know, change can be hard. And they're, they're willing to jump in, um, and, you know, especially the summer, changing in curriculum, shutting to campuses, doing the choice. Um, some really positive attitudes from our staff. Um, and I'm, you know, I, I can't wait to be in front of y'all this time next year.
Me either.
So.
Thank you. We'll now move to item B, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, Student Code of Conduct. Dr. Gustavo's favorite time of year. He is our Associate Superintendent for Student Services.
Every year about this time, we ask that you approve our Student Code of Conduct every other year, which is a legislative year. There are quite a few changes, and this year we have a lot. And we have spent the last couple of months trying to review some of those with you, some of the items, some of the highlights. Certainly not everything that's in the Student Code of Conduct. You've seen the, in your board book, you have a copy of the red line, and you can see that there are many, many, many changes. And so we've highlighted a few in our presentation today, are here to answer any questions that you might have about with the presentation and anything that's in the, um, red line. Um, and then we will come back to you on Thursday and ask that you approve the final version of, of the Student Code of Conduct. It has to be approved prior, prior to the school year, we're almost meeting that, so. All right, the, the, um, changes are reflected predominantly by these four bills, really by House Bill six, uh, which had many major, uh, discipline reforms. Have some substantial changes in chapter thirty-seven. Um, one of the items that is worth highlighting is that, uh, the state reinterpreted what, um, out-of-school suspension and in-school suspension to be the same thing. And instead of allowing some leeway for principals, which they've had, uh, for in-school suspension, they put a limit of three for in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension in the reinterpretation. Uh, and this releases us, or releases our administrators from that. So if a student is suspended out-of-school suspension, it's a max of three days. But now the limit, um, i- is not there for, um, in-school suspension. So students can be placed in in-school suspension for more than three days. They are required to review the placement if it is more than ten days every ten, every tenth day. Um, it removes the mandatory DAP for e-cigarette possession. So the state required that any student that was in possession of any cigarette would be placed at a DAP. We, um, exempted ourselves from that from, through DOI, the District of Innovation Plan. So this really doesn't impact us, other than at some point, we just need to remove that from our District of Innovation Plan. And so it basically leaves us where we're at without the need of a District of Innovation exemption.
So on that point, if you don't mind, so going back to looking at this House bill and how we're implementing it, really the primary focus is making our classrooms safer and allowing teachers to teach, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so since we're talking about safety.
Safety, um, and chapter thirty-seven is a discipline.
So since we're talking about safety and it's already come up tonight, um, I am, as a relatively new school board member, I'm incredibly proud of how safe our campuses are. And I'm incredibly comfortable sending my kids to them every single day. And so I just want to thank you and the rest of the team and the administration for all the work that we've done in, whether it be with safety audits or anything else that's going on. So thank you for that hard work, go ahead and continue.
Thank you.
I have one question kind of for the record is why e-cigarette? Why do you feel it was taken out of DAP, and why did we want to exempt ourselves from that?
We exempted ourselves because we would not be able to hold that many students in a DAP. Um, and so we wanted the option to place them in in-school suspension in addition to that. We are, obviously, these are just e-cigarettes, nicotine e-cigarettes. If there are, um, anything other than that, then there is a, there is a greater consequence up to expulsion for others, so. House Bill six also allows us the creation of virtual expulsion programs. So in cases where the Taylor County Learning Center, which is our Juvenile, JJAP, our Juvenile, um, placement for expulsions, if they were to deny the placement, we would, um, have the option of send them home and providing them a virtual, virtual education. And so we are working on, um, seeing, having that ready in case we have to, to utilize that. That's better than just sending them home without any type of education, and so. But it allows us the creation of that, which we have not had in the past. Um, fourteen eighty-one, of course, is the one we've been talking about for a year, trying to get ahead of it in our cellphone or, um, communications device policy. Um, you know a lot about that. Senate Bill three twenty-six requires districts to define anti-Semitism using government code, certain government code, and, and to assess motivation for conducts, conduct violations using this standard. So if, um, you utilize that particular definition to decide, uh, if there's a, um, motivation for, um, misconduct in this manner. Student technology and AI use, it just adds unauthorized use of artificial intelligence as academic dishonesty. Um, and it is a code of conduct violation as well. Campus Behavior Coordinator, an expansion in that role. In, in the past, we have been able to designate multiple campus behavior coordinators. Uh, so our assistant principals were those, play those roles. Now the state's requiring for one single individual on the campus to be that. And there's, there's some, some high responsibility in that, that individual has to personally ensure that chapter thirty-seven code is put in, in place. And so that, that, um, they can designate some of those responsibilities to others, but they have to personally verify that. And so that's, um, it's a high bar. And so we're asking each campus to kind of look at who on the campus is going to be designated and what process we're going to use to ensure that that's, that's happening. Um, that campus behavior coordinator, um, coordinates with threat assessment teams, uh, ensures that things are being posted that should be, um, posted regarding threat assessments. We made a few changes at the request of our principals regarding the dress code. We added no costumes or parts of costumes in the middle school and high school. There is a major section that's removed. Um, this continues to be an ongoing conversation for years. And that is how comfortable or how uncomfortable it might be for some of our administrators to try to decide length and measure, um, um, whether a student is wearing, and, um, too short or too long. And so we removed that and left it up to the principal to make, um, a determination of what's appropriate or not appropriate. Ultimately, they have the final say regarding that. Um, and then we've removed the no sleep where it's permitted. Uh, again, it's up to the principal to make the determination of appropriate and appropriate. But, um, principals are looking this year, especially in the high school, at, um, looking at ensuring that students come in with, um, a yonder bag. Now we're making sure that every one of them have an ID. Uh, and there are just some, some major things we want to be focused on. And the, the honest comments from them were, this is probably not something that we can comply with, and if it's in policy, it makes it difficult for us to, so. Any questions? A lot more information in the red line version. Um, that you can certainly review and, and ask. Um, in your board book for Thursday, you have the final version of that Student Code of Conduct with highlights. So anywhere we had options or choices, we highlighted which choice we made so that you could, you could see that. Any other questions?
We know that those changes didn't come overnight, and you did mention that you visited with the people who were enforcing these things and came to an agreement with them, and we appreciate that input.
Right, thank you.
Okay, well now, are we, are we ready to move to item C? Which is also Dr. Dr. Villanueva, uh, proposed local policy FNCE.
This.
This is local policy.
This is local policy, which the, the board is required to, um, create, implement, uh, as a response to the legislative, legislative session, which is, um, what we've been doing again, and that's the provision of communication devices, cell phones on our campuses. And so this basically creates the policy that you're required to create. And so our recommendation, um, is that you approve that policy. It's pretty simple, it is, um, it basically states what the law states, and then allows us to create regulation, allows us to create procedures, which we have been doing already throughout the year to implement that. Any questions about that?
That's, that's not up for a vote tonight, correct?
No. The, both of these items are a report, they're information for you, um, first read. Both of these items are a report, they're information for you first read. And then on Thursday, we will come back and ask you to, to vote for these. Of course, between now and then, if you have questions or you need to see something specific, you'd certainly welcome to email me.
I'm wondering if we could just go ahead and ask for the, the policy F N C to see it.
Policy F N.
Or is it in our board book that I missed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Then I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gustavo.
Thank you.
Now let's move to item eight. Businesses, business items requiring board action. Ms. Allison Sims returning to her.
We are going to be talking about employee compensation. And I just wanted to recap in our board workshop, we talked a lot about these models. These are the zero percent, one percent, and two percent model for general pay increases across all pay grades. This is the option we talked about first, which was the two percent administrative professional pay grade increase, and then three percent for all the others. You'll notice just the little pink and blue over there. It kind of talks about what the cost is beyond the teacher retention allotment and the difference between the two percent plan. And then in workshop, Mr. Goodman requested the four, the two percent for the administration, administrative pay grade, and then four percent for all others. And this is the cost difference here. The difference between the two and three percent model is two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. So there they are for you. Stipends, we talked a little bit about keeping those key stipends in place for hard-to-find positions. And recommendation. House Bill Two pays for the increases for, pay increases for teachers. Five hundred dollars for teachers with one to two years' experience. Recommending the two percent general pay increase for the administrative professionals. Technology pay grades four through seven, which is also in that professional category. And then a four percent general pay increase for technology pay grades one through three auxiliary and clerical professionals, which catches all of our hourly workers in that four percent pay increase. Adopt the proposed pay structure, structure adjustments to improve the market pay equity and provide adjustments to address market differences and maintain equity, and then approve stipends as presented. Any questions for me?
Can you go back to the chart?
Yes.
And just pointing out that the T R A stands for?
Teacher Retention Allotment.
Which is a pass-through amount from the state.
Correct.
We don't, that's not our money.
Right.
And so that is why it's not adding up of, and that's why the little pink thing and the blue thing are important.
Yes, yes. So the, the three-point-eight million is, is money from the state for the, for the teacher pay raises. And then the, the pink is the cost beyond that, and then the differences between some of the other plans.
Not expecting you to get too deep into the weeds, but regarding the teacher retention allotment, roughly what does that mean for teachers in Abilene? How much are they getting? If you don't mind taking a moment, I know we've talked about that, but I think it's good for the public.
I think that's important to hear. So teachers with three to four years of experience are going to receive two-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And that's ongoing, so it's not, it's not just a one-year thing. It's going to be something that they get in year three and year four. When they hit year five, they're going to get five thousand dollars added to their pay. And again, that is ongoing. So I've, I've had some questions about that. My understanding is if a teacher is in year four this year, they get the two-thousand-five-hundred. But when they move to year five, then it would go to the, to the five thousand. So it is a, it is a good payment. That is my understanding as I, as I can get to it right now.
So by and large, the majority of the teachers in Abilene I S D will be getting a, a, an increase, one way or the other.
And noticeable.
That'll involve a comma, and most of them will feel really good about that.
Noticeable increase, yes.
Plus they have to break me, recommend me, meet requirements to get that. What is that?
Just years of, years of service.
Touching?
Uh, right, four, four hours of teaching. And so even our part-time employees, we have several that we employ, they get the full amount. It's not half. If they teach, or a teacher of record for four hours a day, they get the full amount.
Thank you.
Sure.
When you say it's ongoing, my understanding was that by any of them, that's what the vote is going to be done in legislature. So that is not a guaranteed dollar amount. That's per our legislature.
Right. That, correct. I think the intent is that it would be ongoing. We will get funded for it this year and next year, and then it will go back to the legislature to see if that's money they're going to continue to send us.
Otherwise, we would be taking care of that three-point-eight million.
Correct.
If that does go away.
Correct.
Great. This is hard work.
Taking that responsibility, or we would be addressing.
Right.
We would, we would have to address it, and it's.
I didn't make a.
You, you know, this is a tricky thing. When you increase somebody's pay, that's always a happy time, but to tell them that you're going to reduce it is, that's.
It's structured as a bonus as opposed to a salary increase?
No, it's a salary increase. It is, it is.
Important distinction.
Right, it's T R S eligible. So they, it goes towards their total.
Comp.
Compensation, yes.
This chart is a result of a lot of work, and we're very thankful that it has been put in this format to help us understand what we're looking at, what we're desiring to approve.
Sure.
You know, so if we approve this, the total increase in salaries issued will be close to five point, or over five-point-seven million dollars.
Correct.
State is funding three-point-eight million of that, which we're very thankful for. But that means the district's taking on additional one-point-nine million dollars in costs.
Correct.
A year ago, when we adopted a thirteen-million-dollar deficit budget, it was really in question whether we would be able to do this.
Yes.
But because of a lot of hard work and a really lot of difficult decisions between this team and our finance team, the district is a much healthier place than it was a year ago. And so thankfully.
That is right.
We can do this. And so I just, I want to let people know that like this is only available because of a lot of hard work and a lot of hard decisions that have been made over the last year to get the district in a much better financial decision. And I want those people to get credit for that, so.
It, it, it allows us to honor the people who have, have stuck with it and who have gone through the, the hard decisions with us.
Raises well deserved, but a lot of people need to get credit for that.
Okay. Now you can go back to your recommendation.
Okay.
I just.
Sure.
I love that. That's a great visual.
All right. There they are.
You have any more questions for Ms. Sims?
Just.
Do you want to read over that?
Do you want me to read?
Have you, yeah.
Sure. So the recommendation is the House Bill Two pay increases for teachers, which is paid for by the state. Five hundred dollars for teachers, increase for teachers with one and two years of experience at two percent. That we pay for that, that's on, that's on us, and that's included in that total that was in that little pink bubble. Two percent general pay increase for administrative professionals, and then technology pay grades four through seven. A four percent general pay increase for technology pay grades one through three auxiliary and clerical professionals, which is all of our hourly workers. Adopt a proposed pay structure adjustment to improve market pay equity. Provide adjustments to address market differences and maintain equity, and approve stipends as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Was there a motion regarding our twenty-five, twenty-six A I S D Employee Compensation Plan? I will move that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six A I S D Employee Compensation Plan as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll now take a roll call vote. Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Bill Enriquez?
Yes.
Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Taylor Tedmore?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
If I could speak just a little bit, yes, go ahead and clap. Let's clap for that. Absolutely.
Trust me, if it could have been more, we would have definitely done it. And we, we are hoping for much better reports next year this time.
I, I just want to piggyback off of something Dr. Tedmore said, and that is that the, uh, this is possible because of a lot of cooperation and collaboration, especially our finance department, our H R department, deputy superintendent, a lot of the folks on the cabinet, but also campus principals, as we've made very difficult decisions and, you know, closed a couple campuses, and that's kind of the most visible thing. But we implemented a staffing matrix that reduced staffing. And, you know, the, the pie's only so big, so you can either have big slices or you can have a lot of slices, but you can't have a lot of big slices, right? And so coming in here new and, and realizing we had a twelve-point-nine-million-dollar deficit budget, realizing that needed to be fixed, but you also need to take care of your people. That is a difficult Rubik's Cube to, to, to solve. And what I would have found in Abilene I S D is a very skilled, collaborative, and willing team of professionals who understand how to tackle a very tough problem and get to a solution. So a, a, a two percent pay grade, uh, pay raise and a four percent pay raise, and then the pay raise that thankfully our state legislators and, and governor passed on to, to us to be able to take care of our teachers. This, and this all is a really great outcome, and, and two percent doesn't sound like a very big number. But we were at zero percent not very long ago. And I, for months and months and months of the school year, I was convinced that I would have to stand before you tonight and recommend no raise. And then the state funded the raise that they funded, and even at that point, I thought, well, at least some people are getting a raise, but a lot of people won't. And so you may not see the blood, sweat, and tears that, that goes on in the rooms where we meet and try to hash all this out and figure this out. But I, I do just one last time want to say big kudos to especially finance and H R for coming together and, uh, and making this possible. Thank you, and thank you, board, for voting yes.
With pleasure. Let's move on to item B, twenty-five, twenty-six hazardous bus routes. Dr. Joe Waldron, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiley, Dr. Kuhn, members of the board. It's an honor to stand in front of you and talk about this. Last year at this time, we considered this item. Let me refresh your memory. The Texas Education Code allows school districts to declare certain portions of where students may walk as hazardous, and therefore a bus can pick them up and be eligible for reimbursement through the state and claim the miles that bus tra- transported those kids. In general, in school districts in the state of Texas, you have to be outside of two miles from a school in order to claim reimbursement for the miles trans- transported on the bus. These crossings are within two miles of schools. There's a copy of them in your board book, and for the public to see, it's one, it's one for each elementary campus that's operating, and then a couple more. It's essentially the same list as last year minus the two hazardous crossings that were relating to Thomas and Ortiz. So really, a hazardous bus route allows us to access funding for moving a bus to catch kids so that they don't have to go across a major highway. You'll notice in your list, a majority of them are relating to the Winters Freeway or Cat Claw Drive or another four-lane highway with lots of traffic. So. It buzzed at me. So fourteen routes affect, affecting fourteen campuses, every elementary and a few others. Two less than last year. I do recommend your approval and happy to answer any questions that you may have about this. I want to give you one more little fun fact. The miles that we do get to claim, it may be interesting. People might think that the, the state of Texas pays for our transportation department because we transport kids and there's yellow buses all over the place, and they're like, oh, well, the school district gets money for that. Well, that is true. We do get money for it. We get about one-point-eight-six million dollars a year. I invite you to go to transportation and kind of relate one-point-eight-six million dollars to our transportation operation. It's, it's about a third of the funding we would need. So other funds, other buckets of money that Jen has talked to you about help pay for transportation. But this, this is part of helping.
Just real quick, do we have to go through police fire to get these hazardous, hazardous routes approved or recommended? Or is it us that does it?
It is board action.
Well, I mean, to get them identified, I guess I should say.
We can, I, we bring a recommendation to you identifying them, and it's, there's a lot of history to which ones are identified.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And it really doesn't affect the fire or police service. This is literally a decision you guys make to tell the funding agency that we need to be funded for these routes, even though they're within two miles, because we have to send a bus because it's, it's too dangerous for the kids to walk.
Great. Okay.
Even though we close two schools, we do two routes that are hazardous routes, that doesn't reduce our bus schedule or the number of runs we're dealing with.
Correct. That was a hot topic of conversation today. Yes, sir, Dr. Wheat, it does not lessen the complicated nature of transporting students every day.
The same number of students, just two different places.
Hopefully, it's more.
Great. All right. Is there a motion regarding our twenty, twenty-five, twenty-two-six hazardous bus routes?
I move to approve the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six hazardous bus route as presented.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now take a roll call vote. Taylor Tedmore?
Yes.
Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Bill Enriquez?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Let's move on to item C, which is our bank depository contract. Ms. Jennifer Hines, our Chief Financial Officer, is joining us now at the podium.
Good evening. All right. This is, um, this will be a quick one, just a little history. In September of twenty-twenty-one, there was an R F P or a proposal put out to all banks here in Taylor County. We had two responders. First Financial Bank was the bank selected and to be our depository. That comes with not only who, who we do business with, but also some guarantees that our money will be pledged, secure, things like that. So every two years, you can extend for up to three extensions total. And August of twenty-twenty-three was the first term in that R F P for First Financial to be extended. And so now we're at the end of our second possible extension. So it's, it's a pretty, pretty easy tonight. The recommendation is just to vote to approve the resolution for the second of three possible extensions. This extends our current depository contract with First Financial Bank through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. And I'll just say, just to add a little bit, First Financial is a great partner for us. You heard earlier, Jordan mentioned them. In the finance office, we love dealing with First Financial. We have great contacts, great people that are tremendous in helping us accomplish what we need to for our daily business. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. That is, that is pretty much it tonight.
Okay. Any other questions? You deserve a breather. Is there a motion regarding the bank depository contract?
So move to approve the bank depository contract as presented.
Second.
Okay. We'll now take a roll call vote. Angie Wiley, yes. Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Taylor Tedmore?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Bill Enriquez?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Let's move now to item D, which is Policy E F B Local. Patty Blue, our Associate Superintendent for Curriculum Administration, is returning to the podium.
Good evening. Again, in our previous workshop on last Thursday, we had some discussion about Policy E F B Local. Just a quick review of what we discussed, this is really coming out of Senate Bill Thirteen that just passed. The primary focus is regulation of school district library materials, catalogs, parental rights, establishment of the local school library advisory. SLAC is the acronym that we, we learned there. This was signed in law on June twentieth, so it has not even been on the books for two months yet. But there are pieces of this. But there are pieces of this that we have to go ahead and take a little bit of action on. The work was actually started in the 88th session with House Bill 900. We do have a lot of current practices and policies in Abilene ISD that meet some of these things or are very well put us down the road to being able to meet them. We have not received formal guidance at this point. And the big piece that we have to take on is that we are supposed to adopt EFB local before the start of the 2526 school year. Just some brief overviews of what's in there. Did I miss a page? No. The board will be much more involved going forward in regards to purchasing of library materials. The board will have to approve everything that we purchase. This also includes anything that is donated. And there is a posting requirement in Senate Bill 13 that we will also have to follow. Those are some, the specific procedures, those sorts of things have not been determined yet. And we have time to get those pieces implemented, but the policy EFB local is the piece that the law says we're supposed to go ahead and get done. Parent involvement is a big piece of Senate Bill 13. It grants access to students' library checkout histories. It includes library catalogs, parents have to have access. And it does specifically mention school libraries, classroom libraries, online libraries and library mobile applications. Parents do have the right to restrict. And then again, the library local advisory council. And there are two pathways for that council to be established. So a little more about the council. The Board of Trustees of each school district may establish a local school advisory council to assist the district in ensuring that local community values are reflected. A school district does not have, that does not establish a local school library advisory council must ensure that the district's procedures for adding or removing library books comply with, and there's some references in the law. The Board of Trustees of the school district shall establish a local school library advisory council if the parents of at least 10% of the students enrolled in the district or 50 or more parents, for us, that would be 50, of the students enrolled in the district, whichever is fewer, present the board a petition to establish a local school advisory council. A council established under this subsection may not be abolished until the third anniversary of the date on which the council was established. So if a SLAC is established, here's the purpose. The district has to consider the SLAC recommendations before. And again, we went through this in depth at workshops, so I'm not going to read every single thing on these lists. The duties of the SLAC, they are to be recommending policies, procedures. And that continues on another slide. Who is on the SLAC? It designates who the members are to be and how they get there. There's also in the law wording about how many times they have to meet, when they meet, how we have to post, how we have to record those meetings. Those sorts of things are in the law. And then the proposed policy, this is where we've discussed that there's, there's two options for the policy that we've been presented at this point. One would be if you establish the SLAC at this time. One would be if you choose not to do that at this point. So some of the things that are just in that proposed policy, it's not all about the SLAC. There's collection development, donated and proposed procurement. Some of these things, again, the finite, the, yeah, the details of how we would actually do that, the procedures, that's the piece we still have some time to get in place. Implementing Senate Bill 13 is going to be evolving for a while. It's going to take a while to get all the pieces in place. As we receive some guidance, we'll move and make sure our current practices are in alignment with that. We are trying to get many of the pieces in place. There are some things we've researched. Again, we do have some of these things in place. We do know we need to get policy EFB local in place before the first day of school is what the law says. Lindsay Williamson is actually who has taken on library services this year to oversee that. And she's been working with our certified librarians closely already to learn what this means and to monitor the continued implementation of Senate Bill 13. So the administrative recommendation at this point is that we approve local EFB local without the formation. Just reminding, part of this is because we don't have a whole lot of guidance about some of the things in Senate Bill 13. And once we get a little more clarity, we feel like that a better decision could be made. This is a policy that can be changed. So if you, if, if the board votes tonight to not do the policy with the SLAC, that is not, that is something that could be changed later if that, if you so choose.
I'd like to say something about the recommendation. We have agonized and debated and talked a lot about this particular policy. And I want to, I actually want to talk quite a bit. I always feel like I have not just the right to make recommendations to the board, but the obligation. You guys count on me to have the courage of my convictions and not just come up here and say, oh, whatever you guys want to do, right? Like, I mean, you pay me to, to lead and I expect myself to lead, right? So I never want to not give a solid recommendation because my job is to recommend. Y'all's job is to vote. You don't have to vote for my recommendation. You vote your heart, your conscience. I recommend my heart, my conscience. But sometimes an interesting thing happens in the life of a superintendent and that is a policy or a rule comes along that I'm a little bit agnostic about. And it could kind of go either way, right? I don't have strong opinions about every single policy decision that comes along. Sometimes it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. And so this is kind of like that. This, this particular policy has some pros and cons with it. And before I, before I get into that, I want to talk about what we're already doing in our libraries because I, I don't want you guys to be misled to think that it's a free for all and we got Playboys hanging up in the high school library, okay? First of all, we have a challenge policy that anybody that finds a book that they think is inappropriate in the library can file a challenge. And there is a committee that will review that challenge and then that committee will determine whether the challenge is legitimate or whether the challenge is frivolous. And if they determine that the challenge is legitimate, they will remove the book from the library. That's the policy. If they decide that the challenge is frivolous, the book will stay in the library because one person shouldn't dictate, you know, what book should be in the hands of, of an entire city's children, right? So that policy is in place. The other thing we're doing is every single book in every library in Abilene ISD is posted online. So that, right, there, there, there are.
Our library catalogs are.
Our library catalogs, not the actual books, but our library catalogs. So you can go on our website and you can see the titles of the books that we have in our libraries. There are no hidden books that nobody knows about. And that's because of legislation that was passed the last legislative session. We're completely compliant with that. And I do want to say that a lot of times laws like this, especially when you start getting into kind of onerous bureaucracy where we're spending a ton of money to comply with, with these mandates, they come about because some crazy school district, usually in a really big city, did something crazy. And it, and then it's blanket applied to every school in the state, no matter the cost, no matter the financial cost or the cost in terms of labor, right? The other thing I want to say that we have in place, and that's where this came from. This started, I don't know, five or 10 years ago because of a couple of schools that had, had definitely had books they, they should not have had. Librarians made some bad decisions. The other thing we have in place, I want to make sure you guys know, is we have a parent opt-out policy. So if there is a book in a library and you as a parent don't want your child to have access to that book, you can say that, right? Am I correct about that?
My understanding, yes.
Yeah. So you can say, I don't want my child to have access to that book. Your child won't have access to that book. So we're already doing quite a few things. So I want to tell you reasons why I would be against having a SLAC and then I want to tell you reasons why I would not be against having a SLAC. And then I'm going to end with a soft recommendation rather than a hard recommendation. And I hesitate to do that because I think it makes me sound like a wimp and I do not want to sound like a wimp. I want to lead like I'm supposed to. Here are the reasons that I would be against having the, the SLAC in place right now. Number one, what Patty said, and this is, this is what Patty and I have talked about with the rest of the cabinet, is that this, this law is still evolving in front of our eyes. We don't exactly know what it's going to entail. And so there is some wisdom in saying, let's just hold our water and see what comes of it and then we can decide later if we should or should not. The, the, the other reason and the reason that this is what's in front of you right now, this particular direction, not adding the SLAC right now, a lot of it has to do with me being mad and wanting to protest other aspects of this law. The, the one that really has me upset is the potential, we're not sure yet, but the potential that my elementary teachers who are getting ready to receive children tomorrow will have to go through a thousand books in their elementary classroom library and catalog those so that we can upload those so parents can see every classroom library. A kindergarten teacher, the books are very small and very short. They have, I'm not exaggerating when I say a thousand. Someone sent me a picture yesterday of a classroom and said, thank goodness, I don't have to catalog all these books. That is a ridiculous potentiality. And again, maybe it won't come to that. That's why we're waiting to see what this law says. But if every one of my kindergarten teachers has to catalog every one of their books and theoretically has to do it by September 1st, number one, it's not possible. Number two, we're losing teachers left and right in Texas public schools. We're not paying them the way we should pay them. We're constantly dumping on them and this will be devastating to the morale of the teachers who take care of our littlest Abilene ISD students, right? So I'm pretty mad about it and that anger makes me want to say, I don't like anything about this. So I, I want to recommend against it. But now let me tell you why I would recommend not to, to go ahead and have the SLAC. Number one, that protest vote will not stop any of the other stuff, right? You're going to adopt EFB local with or without a SLAC. Well, the thing about elementary teachers cataloging their books, if you vote to have a SLAC and the law says they have to catalog their books, they're still going to have to catalog their books. If you vote not to have a SLAC and the law says they have to catalog their books, they're still going to have to catalog their books. So the SLAC inside of me is kind of getting tarred and feathered because of association with other parts of, of this, this law or this policy. The other reason that you might consider having the SLAC is because frankly, the existence of some obscene library books in school libraries outside of Abilene, in, in the DFW metroplexes where this all started, has, has caused about eight or 10 years of public school districts being really impugned in the public square. The, the, the way public schools are talked about, the, and it's, it's political fodder for some of our legislators, right, to, to criticize public schools. Well, a positive that could come out of a SLAC is some of the heat would come off of your public school educators when it comes to making decisions about whether a book is or is not obscene, right? Because now that wouldn't be John Kuhn saying, oh, that book's fine. It wouldn't be Joe Waldron. It wouldn't be the principal. It wouldn't be a teacher. It would be a committee of multiple people from multiple backgrounds, right? So if someone were to say, I've got a problem with that book and this SLAC were to say, well, we don't, now it's not really the school district that is okay with this book that, that someone's offended by. It's, it's, it's a more, I guess, neutral group of people. So I'm not trying to muddy the waters, but sometimes the things I have to make recommendations on are muddy. Sometimes they're not clear cut and this is one of those, right? So I'm, I'm not going to backtrack on what's in front of you. I will give you a very soft recommendation to approve EFB and wait on the SLAC. But as I've told you many times before, you have to vote your conscience and you don't always have to go with my recommendation. And you guys just need to do what you think is best for the children of Abilene ISD and whatever that is as a school district, we're going to respect that. Thank you and Patty, thank you. And we're happy to answer any questions about this.
The only thing that came to my question was during all this, it never gave a timeline that the SLAC can be, has to be established. So should not be envisioned that if we voted for a SLAC, that, that's going to be, those phone calls are going to go out tomorrow because I'm assuming that's not correct.
No.
And it could not even happen before Christmas. I mean, until, it will happen eventually, but we do not have any way of being able to tell when.
That, that's the bottom line. That's one of those unknown pieces to all of this that we're waiting on that formal guidance about that. It's like, okay, so if you make the decision, we're going to do it, then, so, yeah.
Can you go back to the slide, the parent involvement slide? Sorry.
You're good. Whoop, there it was.
I mean, I think the first three bullet points, we're already doing those things correctly. I mean, correct?
Granted, the library checkout history, the one thing there is it's available, but parents do have to call and request it. I believe Senate Bill 13, we're going to have to make that a little more easily accessible for parents.
Like electronically?
That's, to negatively how I understand that, but that's one of those pieces of to be seen. Granted access to library catalogs, they are to our school libraries. We don't actually have classroom catalogs, library catalogs. What teachers place in their classrooms is, is their discretion at this point.
And that's one of the things that's still up in the air.
That's one of those pieces, we don't know if Senate Bill 13 requires that or not. Online libraries, again, that's one of those things that, that parents have access to the online pieces. And then the mobile applications, again, that's, they, they have access to a lot of these, these parts and pieces, yeah.
And then like, so I mean, we have policies in place for informal and formal complaints. Do you know how many formal complaints we received last year about books in our libraries?
None.
None that we know of. And has this had any negative impacts on partnerships with other libraries in our community?
The Abilene Public Library has ended our MOU. We used to be able, our kids could check out books from our Abilene Public Library system. And the Abilene Public Library notified us that they just feel like this is an area that is not where they need to be getting into.
I mean, I said this the other night, yeah, just the formation of this council. I mean, it's one more thing for our administrators to have to do. They have to form a committee. They have to make sure it meets twice a year. They have to put a 72-hour notice that the meeting's going to happen. They have to record it. They have to post the recording online. It's all this work, additional work on the district for very minimal gain. I mean, we didn't have a single formal complaint last year. Just seems like a lot of work for something that's not that big of an issue. That's just my opinion on that.
So just a couple of thoughts that I have. I think Senate Bill, I agree with just about everything that's been said so far tonight. And I, and I think that we're not really frankly, in my opinion, debating Senate Bill 13. It passed. So the reality is how I feel about it really frankly doesn't matter. I think there's a lot of really good intentions in Senate Bill 13. But I think even as was presented tonight, for those of us who've read it before, there's a lot of gray that they didn't cover in these four pages. So our job is to try to navigate that in the meantime. I think that we've done a very good job in this district of managing the content of the library books. I've not always lived in Abilene, Texas. I'm from here, had enough wisdom to get back here as soon as I could. How Abilene does this and frankly, how Texas does this has a leg up on a lot of other communities. But sometimes capital cities, whether they be in Austin or in Washington, decide to focus on national issues and sometimes state issues and create regulations to Taylor's point that are burdensome in communities that aren't really issues here in our town. Now I understand there's some books that, I couldn't tell you every single book we have in our library. I'm sure that there's some that I would be really uneasy with. But you know what I'm going to do as a parent? I'm going to make sure those aren't the books my kids check out. Now, where my issues are with Senate Bill 13, Dr. Kuhn laid that out very clearly. This is a regulatory nightmare for teachers. I also know that in a school district that has 13,000 to 14,000 students, getting 50 parents to sign a petition frankly is a drop in the bucket. So I feel like this is coming regardless. And so again, I go back to this isn't so much about Senate Bill 13. This is about how does Abilene ISD serve our kids and our community well? And so keeping the focus back on parental involvement, every day of the week, I'm going to trust our parents with the content that we put into our classrooms and put into our schools. And so while I think sometimes as a school board member, there's things that I'm going to have to hold my nose on and sometimes vote in a particular fashion, this is probably going to be one of those. But from where I sit, I appreciate the intent behind where they're trying to go with the SLAC. I don't like a lot of the things that are going to have to come as a result of it, but I believe that train is coming and so it makes sense for us to be in front of it and, and lean into having a SLAC. Thank you. Thank you.
Two very well-presented points, and I appreciate that about our board tremendously. You will find that we don't always agree, but we do always unite with what's best for the kids, and that is something very golden about this board. All right, well, be very careful on the wording that you choose. Is there a motion regarding policy EFB local? I move to approve policy EFB local SLAC be approved as presented.
I second.
Let's take a roll call vote.
Clarify which version was presented.
Well-
Is this on the screen?
No, that is not. Okay, I need to take that out because it was not presented. I chose a motion. It was to approve policy EFB local SLAC.
And I second that.
I misna, I should not have said as presented.
So you're saying with-
With a SLAC.
The formation of the SLAC.
Yes, to be determined by policies handed down in the future from the state.
So I'll just clarify so everybody understands, that is EFB local with the SLAC is the recommendation that has been moved and seconded?
Now let's take a roll call vote. Danny Wheat?
Question.
Sure.
You said timeframe will be determined by policy.
Or by the state. As we get that-
You mean, we don't have a timeline yet, so we're waiting to find out the timeline on when it has to be established?
Is that?
Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so there should be some modification to that so that we know when administration has got that information and then can give us a reasonable timeline to build that.
And I believe there's state guidance, I mean, I think what it sounds like we're looking for is some guidance from the state in terms of what that timeline would be.
I may have missed.
Well, the, really, there's two different policies, and I know in the workshop materials you had both. There's EFB local alt, and there's EFB local SLAC. Alt is the one that does not have the formation of the SLAC. The EFB local SLAC has, yeah.
That's the recommendation, EFB alt, correct?
Is the recommendation.
Okay. Be very clear to y'all, it's alt that's the recommendation, the one that doesn't form the SLAC initially, okay? I think that's what you meant, Ms. Wiley, and I think you picked the wrong one.
No, I think, no, she meant-
You may have picked the right one.
No, I think she meant with the SLAC, and that's okay, right? They-
No, that's fine. It's up to her.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that everybody understood the two versions-
Yeah.
And the comments.
And the question is, we don't have like a, like, if y'all say, yes, we're going to do SLAC, there's no guidance that says within 60 days it has to be done. We haven't gotten that kind of guidance. So if you approve it tonight, that doesn't mean in like two weeks we're going to have a SLAC up and running. I think is where Ms. Wiley's comment questions were coming from a minute ago, is at this point, it's just you need to pass EFB local and the guidance of, yes, you want us to move forward with establishing a SLAC, but we don't have like a number of days or whatever to get that done.
The administration would come back to the school board and identify what their recommended process is by which the SLAC would be established-
Right.
At which time that would include a timeline in various other nature.
And if you know, if you remember, the SLAC membership, you guys have to nominate. That is a piece of what's in the law.
And so that would be a board meeting, right? We come back and you guys do that.
Right.
And with that-
Two additional questions.
Can you turn your mic on, sir?
Two additional questions that kind of reflect off that. One is the recommendation for EFB local without SLAC or alt. Can the board come back at a later date if we approve that and then recommend adding an advisory committee?
My understanding in the law is if the board chooses to form the SLAC, then it can be, that's what I need to make sure on the law.
I think, I think what, the way you would handle that is if you approve EFB local alt tonight, you'd come back at a future date and approve EFB local SLAC to replace the policy.
But in between that time, a petition could be presented with 50 signatures to form a SLAC in which we would be responsible to do.
Yes, and I believe that's what I'm-
But we'd still be under the same guidelines of timeframe. We'd still have to wait for the state to give us guidance.
And I do believe, what I'm trying to just double-check myself is, I believe if you form it, and you may have to help me on this one. If the board forms it, there's no restrictions on when it can be abolished or anything like that, but if it's formed through the petition, then the SLAC must stay intact for three years.
I saw the minimum was five members on SLAC, but is there a maximum number? That's still guidance that's-
That's nothing, nothing's there. It's just the five members, and that each board, each board trustee gets to nominate someone that they feel like should fill that, then they go in and tell you, it is supposed to be parents of enrolled students, and they do go in and give you a list of some other people that can serve as non-voting members.
So it would be safe to say that if we do move forward with establishing a SLAC, there's a little bit more control at the local school board level on the timing of that SLAC and when it would be implemented, as opposed to leaving it open to a petition.
Any more clarification?
So legally, do we need to, as a board, address the timeframe on the SLAC?
No, sir. I think it's already in the-
The way it was presented, it was-
I didn't say that.
That we're going to go to policy and-
You're just going to implement that policy, does that-
Guidance.
I don't have the policy in front of me, so I apologize for that, but does that policy give you the two options, the board approved or the petition option?
No, they're choosing between two different policies.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
And so essentially, the vote really is just which of these two policies is going into our policy manual. All the details will wash out from-
And the SLAC is the one where the board forms the SLAC, forms the committee. The alt was, we wait.
Yes.
And let this, okay, just want to make sure.
Correct.
I added extra words.
No, you did fine.
So Roberts Rules of Order, where we are right now, we have a motion-
And a second.
And a second, and I'm not sure, is the timeline baked into that motion, and if so, does it need to?
It doesn't sound like it is.
Okay.
So the motion was to approve policy EFB local SLAC. We have a motion and we have a second. We'll now take a roll call vote. Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes? Taylor Tippmore?
No.
Sandy Urles?
Yes.
Bill, Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Bill Enricus?
No.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
The vote passes five to two. Thank you very much, board.
I really just want to express my appreciation for you guys giving this the consideration that it merits.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned and the time is 7:44.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your attendance.